Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Monday planning and zoning board meeting. I'd like you to please, uh, stand and begin. Please leave the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chairman, we have roll call, please.
Daley?
Here.
Lee Hammer?
Here.
Hickinson is absent. Bushian?
Yes.
Pachowski?
Here.
Thornton? Abson? Offerley?
Mr. Offerley will be here in a few moments. Please believe.
Chief Daley?
Here.
John Rannieri?
Here.
Mayor's excuse. He's at the convention.
Dennis?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Uh, Solster Rowan?
Here.
Brian Wall?
Here.
And Keith, I guess, will be a couple minutes.
Okay, fine. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Oklahoma Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner: Posted on the board and the board clerk's office an email to retrospect and attorney counsel. First order of business is approval of the minutes from March 11th. Any questions on the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes from March 11th.
So, move.
Motion by Mrs. Bushian. Second one, Mr. Pachowski, feel on favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Under new business, we have an application, uh, for a variance, for a expansion or a non-conforming use. If you want to come on and be sworn.
Mr. Chairman, just for some housekeeping, just to put on the record this evening that Mr. Vannella is our first hold minute, is sitting in for, uh, Rich Hickinson?
Yes.
And if the, Mr. Chairman lady approves, uh, we could seat Craig for Ron. Since we're going to need five affirmative votes on a used variance. John cannot vote, and our mayor's not here, but, uh...
Yeah, that's good. Let's go ahead and see, we'll see him for Ron and, um, if Ron shows up. I mean, I know that Offerley is coming, he's just delayed.
Okay, so we'll seat Craig for Ron, so Craig, you'll be able to vote.
Oh, Mr. Knight. Let the record show that Mr. Knight has joined us.
Do you want Craig to sit there next to us?
Doesn't matter. He'll be joining, whatever, whatever you're comfortable with. Absolutely.
Mr. Speck, you, um, did you raise your hand? You solemnly swear affirm that testimony you're about to give is warranted by proof on that to the best of your knowledge. This is an application for a used variance as, uh, Mr. Speck was in, I believe, last month on an informal one. He has a, uh, a multifamily property in an R1 residential zone that currently has a commercial unit as a, uh, pre-existing non-conforming use. I reviewed the application, it appears that Mr., uh, Speck wants to, um, allow, or get a variance to allow another residential apartment to take the place of the commercial status.
Yep.
What do you think?
Good evening.
As you all said, uh, I do my own own setting room on Avenue, uh, for apartment units and commercial space. I had come in for an informal hearing last month, uh, in reference to a potential tenant for the commercial space. Not overly great tenants, but they were tenants. And it was suggested that possibly I might consider converting the commercial space into a residential space.
Mr. Speck, I'm sorry, interrupting you. Mr. Rannieri, uh, you have to step down for this, uh, portion of the hearing. These should probably go in the back in case it's denied.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Should we accept? When we come, when we come back for the second portion of it, we'll call you back in. We'll be able to vote on the application itself.
Is it open?
It's open. I'm sorry about that, it's just a formality. Continue, please.
So, the idea is that the commercial space in the residential area is more, the converting to residential would be less non-conforming. I realize the building itself is non-conforming, but it is, it's always been there. It's been there since the mid-'20s. And there's, I feel there's less of an impact if the unit is converted into a one-bedroom apartment as opposed to a commercial space. As the plans show, I have plenty of parking to add another unit. I have more than enough parking for the ordinance. If, uh, I'm not sure, but if I don't need a handicap spot anymore, since there's no commercial space, then I would add three extra spaces. If it remained commercial, then that limits the parking, and it puts parking on the street in front of neighbors, and I think that's more of an impact. So, you know, it's in my opinion that it is a less of an impact on the town. I don't see any drawbacks to it. The non-conformities of the building have always been there. I'm not changing anything on the outside, so, you know, any non-conformities have always been there and always will be. I don't, I'm not changing anything on the outside at all, so... I believe I, I addressed anything that needs to be addressed.
Carl, did you get, um, Mr. Bryan's letter, the engineer's letter dated, uh, April 2nd, 2015?
Yes, I did.
And I'm going to just bring your attention to paragraph number four. Apparently, uh, Bryan feels that a, uh, a variance is required regarding the parking buffer 20 feet from the, uh, front and right away. Can you speak to that, uh, to that issue?
According to the ordinance, if I was putting in the parking lot now, I would have to maintain a 20-foot buffer. Parking lot's already there. I'm not asking to change it, so I don't feel that an additional variance is necessary. But if it is, it is. But I'm not changing the parking lot. Whether it stays commercial or whether it goes residential, that parking lot is where it's at. It was approved back when I purchased it, I think, in 1995 or 1997. Where's the buffer for it? The, uh, that house on Pine Avenue or, or the one on Davis Avenue? About a 20-foot buffer.
The 20 feet on the right line, so it's from Pine Avenue to Pine Avenue.
So, if you're pulling, you're coming up Pine Avenue towards Davis, this building's on the right. So, the right way turning into his parking lot, there should be a 20...
Those parking spaces should be set back 20 feet from the right-of-way line.
So, there should go deeper into his parking lot.
Again, this is an existing condition, it's non-conforming. The reason why this is being listed is this is in front of the board for a used variance. When used variances are in front of the board, you have to, you have to take into consideration all, um, non-conformances. And this is a non-conformity.
Do you, Mr. Hall, would you consider that a safety problem at this point in time?
No, it's, um, the, since there's, um, only one access to this parking lot, uh, it is dead end, there's only 11 parking spaces. I don't see it being a, a safety issue. For this case, I believe it's more of an aesthetic...
So, you have, you have 10 or 11 parking spots now for, you would have for five units, right? If we approve this.
I have 10 spots with a handicap.
Okay, so you got 11 total for five units, correct, that we approve?
That's further than our one and a half that was required.
That's required, okay.
We've required one and a half, and you have more than that. Well, I think we, uh, we went over a bit of this last month, as, uh, Mr. Rowan alluded to. Um, we, I think we all agree that it is going to be less of an impact on the community to grant a used variance, um, than if we were trying to put another commercial, uh, back to be in there. I went through the letter from Mr. Pettit's office. Everything else pretty much appears to be in order. Any other questions from the board? And on this portion of the hearing, we are just, uh, voting on the used variance only. We're not voting necessarily. If you have any site plan questions, this is basically just to make sure the board cares of the used variance. Any other questions from the board regarding the used variance?
I have none.
Okay. Uh, Mr.? Yes?
I do want to make a comment. He did say, alluded to that, um, handicapped spaces are not necessary for apartment building, and that is not true. This is considered a commercial site.
Okay.
Even though residences do partis, do partake in this, it is a residential site, or, I'm sorry, a commercial site.
Okay.
So, uh, one handicap space is required.
What you have now?
I'm not sure. I, I said I didn't know if it was required, if it isn't. Yes, I have them now, so I can be, I still have them.
Is it delegated, handicapped, is it labeled, everything is assigned?
I have the signs, I have the... But I have one question. Should we have, I mean, if this is in the old zone, and the, and the non-conforming use is, is apartment and commercial? What's the...
Well, what, what we, what a board can do, and it's, and by baseball and statute, when the board has an opportunity to make a property or a use more compliant, that's one of the factors you consider. And so, if he's removing the commercial and converting that into a residential, that's really a lessening of his non-conforming... He's still a non-conforming use because it was, uh, he has the multifamily.
Correct.
Now, we're giving him a variance to add the fifth.
Fifth, okay. And that abolishes all the commercial use.
The, the commercial, you understand that?
Go on.
You can't go back. Once we do that, unless you came back for a variance, and then not to be...
And the more area is just part of the whole place. That has nothing to do with commercial variance.
Right.
That's not accessible to other people, other than my tenants.
No, I understand, yeah.
That's fine.
So, if the board is satisfied that, yes, it's, the, the property owner is bringing it more into conformance with our statute, and you don't find that there's a detrimental, uh, a substantial detriment to our existing ordinance, you can consider granting it a release. Subject to any other conditions that you may want to, to hear on the next page and, uh...
And this is just something that, um, I don't know why it actually says this here. On page two and page three of Mr. Pettit's letter, uh, the heading up to the upper left-hand corners says Kingdom Outreach Ministries. So, I just want to make that clarification, that that is not the application we're voting on this evening. So, if everybody can just, uh, correct, correct that to, say, Carl Speck III. I, I mean, just as matter of record. Okay? Not trying to be picky, Bryan.
No, I apologize.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions for any members of the board? Okay, Mr. Rowan, um, we had talked about on Monday, uh, not allocating this application. How does you want to handle the voting?
Well, there, Bryan indicated that there may, he may require revision of the site plan.
If that's the case, we'll vote on the used variance right now, and we'll bring Mr. Rannieri back.
Okay.
Okay.
There's just minor, again, they're existing conditions.
Okay, that's fine. We'll bring Mr. Rannieri back for the, the second portion of it. So, I guess with that, Mr. Rowan, we'll just, uh, take roll call for approval of the used variance?
Well, we'll need a motion to approve the, uh, the variance to convert the, uh, to give the, um, the property owner permission to convert the pre-existing non-conforming commercial use to a one-bedroom residential unit in place of the, uh, the commercial unit, with the, um, sir, advice to, uh, the applicant that the commercial use is now extinguished and is abandoned for, um, for any future purposes. It's, there's no going, I can't go back.
Sort of motion on the floor? Mr. Lobenstein?
Thanks, sir.
Signify, Mr. Daley? Roll call, please.
Lee Hammer?
Yes, and please let the record show that Mr. Offerley, uh, joined us at 7:10.
Hickinson is absent. Offerley?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Pachowski?
Yes.
Thornton is absent.
Uh, oh, yeah, Scott, I mean, Craig won't vote in this place, just...
Yeah, I'm getting it.
He's further down the page, Mr. Rowan, just, just calm down.
Daley?
Yes.
Lobenstein?
Yes.
And Vannella. I've called you already?
Yes.
All right, so let's just be sure we have... One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so we have eight, eight pending approval, is that correct? Don't you have any?
Seven.
Something, one, two, three, seven. Okay. All right, that is approved as far as the used variance is concerned. I want to vote, get Mr. Rannieri, and we'll bring him back in. Okay, let the record show that Mr. Rannieri has joined us for the second portion of the application. The used variance was approved, Mr. Rannieri.
Oh, good.
Okay, Dave, where we at?
Um, we should hear, while he's here, while it was noted on Bryan's list, uh, we should entertain the granting of a variance, uh, under our ordinance, uh, 395-13A3. That's that 20-foot buffer.
Okay.
I think there was testimony, uh, there, um, it's more aesthetic than anything else, that there's not a safety concern, and it is testimony that it has existed, uh, since, um, since the building's been there.
So, Mr. Rannieri, you were absent, um, but we did talk about, uh, this buffer, and, uh, Mr. Hall had indicated that it wasn't a safety issue, um, it's pre-existing condition, and Mr. Speck is just asking for us to grant him relief on that portion.
Bryan, is adequate parking, I think it was testimony.
We, um, in order to make sure there's adequate parking, I didn't even know how many total bedrooms there are in the apartment complex, or per unit. Is there a split?
It's two for four, so that they, and then one.
Okay. So, you're sufficient. Um, it's, uh, for two bedrooms, 1.8 per RSIS. So, it's, he needs to be reinforced, just like...
Okay, total, fine, totally.
Are there any other revisions?
As far as the plan needs to be updated with correct zoning information, uh, one of the particulars is the, uh, and again, this is an existing non-conforming, um, the, the parking buffer should be indicated, and... Oh, the, uh, the maximum block coverage or building coverage is being, uh, 35% by ordinance. Um, it appears that that would be exceeded by this existing condition, um, so that should be noted on this, on the plan also. It's been on the plan.
Because we're creating another unit, that's why?
No, it's, the, the, the unit is internal of the building.
Right.
So, the building's not changing, the apartment lot's not changing, but the impervious coverage is...
So, it's been there all along?
Right, it's just put on the record, that's all.
Sir.
Here, here, oh. Okay. Uh, so...
I did pick them up, I don't have the copies, that's the only copy I have of it, but it is all revised, as you asked.
So, we have a revised plan by Mr. Chu dated, um... Oh, there we go, revised April 7th, 2015. And the, the existing block coverage is 72.6, so is a variance of over 30%. I'm sorry, just under 30%.
Shouldn't there be a...
Do you see that number?
Oh, we're...
This coverage from Martin Avenue, uh, 35, required, and 72.6. Okay, he's a... And that's existing, 72.6.
What was the date of that revision, Bryan?
April 7th, 2015.
Thank you.
And that's from section 395 after this, 395-16, C1, C1.
Okay, let the record reflect that the, uh, revisions that were requested by our engineer have been met by a revised plan prepared by, uh, Martin H Chu dated, uh, April 7th, 2015.
Mr. Hall, anything else?
Just to, um, there are some other existing variances, uh, and they've been clarified on the plan, too. So, uh, the side yard, I'm sorry.
Go up there, find out your plan.
Yeah. So, the, the Pine Avenue front yard setback from the building is 2.2 feet from Pine Avenue, where 10 feet is required. And the front yard setback from Davis Avenue is 6.9 feet, where 10 feet is required.
Okay.
And then the rear yard setback of 12.7 feet, where 25 feet is required. And these are all existing non-conformities of situations. And... In, in my letter, um, I had indicated that in my documents, I identified the building is three stories. The, the building is 30 feet high, as indicated on the new revised plan, so there's no variance for that. And that's, that's it. Can I keep this?
Yes. So, we're going to bulk variances for the parking buffer, side yard, rear yard, front yard? And block percentage, and building height?
Yeah, we'll need a total of five variances. And what the, what we would, if the board is, is done questioning or discussion, we would need a motion to approve the revised site plan as prepared by, uh, Martin H Chu dated August, April 7th, 2015, and the following variances. A variance, um, regarding the parking set buffer of 20 feet, uh, which is 395-13A3, uh, that requires 20 feet to allow the, with what is existing, which looks like... 2.5 feet, or?
2.2.
2.2 feet. Uh, another variance from the, uh, impervious coverage, a portion of our ordinance, 395-6C-1. So, in order to allow the applicant to maintain coverage at 72.6%, um, we're going to need bulk variances. The, uh, setback, front yard setback along Pine Street, 2.2 is existing, 10 feet is required. Front yard setback along Davis, 6.9 is existing, 10 feet's required. And the rear yard setback, uh, which presently is 12.7 feet, where 25 feet is required.
Is there any further questions for the applicant or the professionals? Or motion on the floor to...
Uh, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's one. Okay, is there any other questions from anyone? Okay, at this point in time, we're going to open the floor to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this application only, please come forward and be heard.
Motion closed?
All right, motion closed, followed portion by Mr. Vannella, second one by Mrs. Bushian, all on favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve the bulk variances as read by Mr. Rowan?
I make a motion.
What's with Mr. Offerley?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Bushian. Roll call, June?
Lee Hammer?
Yes.
Vannella?
Yes.
Dobie's son?
Yes.
Did I say it right?
Lobenstein.
Lob.
We're good there.
Pachowski?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thornton is absent, Mayor's absent, and Vannella.
Yes.
Okay, you are approved. Wish you a lot of luck. Thanks for coming in. Have a nice evening.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, the only thing I have under my report, uh, is that the financial disclosure reports are due by April 30th, so, uh, hopefully, next time we all meet, they will be in, or Ms. Pinto will be angry at us. So, they are done online, as you well know. You need assistance, let choice know, and, uh, they can do them at the Borough Hall with you. Uh, it'll be a problem, will you?
Sure.
Okay. All right, yeah, I think, uh, everything else on my report will be progress. Under whole business, um, the, I wouldn't even consider this whole business. Uh, communications, uh, I just have some communications from, uh, zoning official, Mr. Knight. Uh, we did issue some zoning permits. I don't think there's anything, uh, we have total plumbing, we have, uh, broadline collision, which I think there's a problem with, Keith?
Yes, there was a denial about it.
Okay. You want to speak to that, sure?
Uh, just, uh, I want to put an application in for variance. Three issues were non-conforming use, non-conforming building, and increasing the impervious coverage.
Are they putting an addition on?
They're putting additional to the existing structure.
They have permits for that?
They have to file for a permit pending the zoning approval, which was denied, so the optics of an application before.
So, they'll be coming, broadline collision will be coming in front of us for that, at a later date. Uh, total plumbing, I think, was okay. And then we had, uh, L.I. Benty Enterprises?
Actually, supposedly, I found out Liberty Enterprises.
Okay.
Their business office.
And their home remodeling business office. We had Dollar Tree, which was...
Expansion of their existing store.
Had you make out about the signings with them?
They gave them all the information, everything that they required, so I haven't had anything come back from them. They signed permits, so I haven't given...
All right. We had some inspection reports, uh, First Blue Enterprises, like, uh, the Delphian Court?
Yes, uh, for the signs.
Okay.
And has submitted four permits for those. Unfortunately, the business court didn't, so it will be rescheduled for, for that, if the signage is resolved.
They have a sign issue with the Delphian?
Yes, putting the, uh, banners up. Again, without a permit, this was the third offense.
Who, who we talk to about that?
Well, it's sent regular, uh, regu, registered in regular mail. Uh, the sign was down today, so I have to do that to make sure that they're properly notifying the court with the proper code now.
Okay. Mr. Knight is doing a wonderful job. We thank you as always. This is, this is a lot of work for Keith to do, and, um, it's, uh, the reason we decided to bring Keith up here, um, this year, and the latter portion of next year, is because we think it's important... Keith up here this year and the latter portion of last year, is because we think it's important for the application of everyone here to know what's going to be coming in front of us in the future, and for the public to know what businesses are getting permits and things of that nature, because things do get done in town that not many people know about. So, we're just trying to inform people of what, what is happening. We have a couple more things. We got twenty-three Ninth Avenue. So, black wood collision, okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's a black wood collision. So, we have some issues with black wood collision as well?
Yes, with the property maintenance issues, and as you'll see there, one of the things that you have changed is for the signs, for abandonment of signs.
Right.
Which now is in effect, and that sign is [inaudible].
We have pictures here, this is what we're trying to address.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, I...
If anyone didn't get the email?
Yes.
This is the abandonment of the signs. We're trying to get, we're trying to get those taken care of in the town. They, they, they look bad.
What do you give them, some days to...
Yes. Yeah, to do something with the sign. The other issue is a vehicle obstructing the sidewalk, and we're expanding the storage of vehicles that are there. And again, I forwarded [inaudible] report also with recommendation to Mayor and Council, review our zoning code in regards to auto body shops, auto body repair, because we don't have anything specific.
Okay.
As to limitations of what kind of vehicles can be out there and how long, so...
So, are you seeing a lot of vehicles in a state of dish repair, left outside, is that your thinking?
Yes, as indicated by the picture there, that there's a vehicle there that doesn't appear to be, and also speaking with the owner, isn't there for repairs.
Okay.
It's being salvaged for farts.
Okay.
And one, obviously, got significant safety hazard.
Right.
Due to the fact that the area isn't in town where children can go up...
Climb around.
...into the vehicle, and which will, under the codes, is considered a traffic nuisance.
Okay.
But again, I think it should be defended as to exactly what cars are there. You have cars that after a while, what I term as planners, they just are there.
Right.
And they stay there for sometimes years, and I believe the purpose of any facility is to repair the vehicles and then put it back in service, not just to store them there for whatever purpose, or restoration at a later date, and unfortunately, [inaudible].
Yeah, I think, I think we, we have to kind of maybe try to mirror what we did with bone mark collision, whereas they pretty much put all their stuff away at night, and they do a nice job of that. You know, they have, they have appropriate fencing and things, and, you know, they have used card your lists while at least, you know, so they, they put their stuff away every night, and, you know, except for the big stuff that we approved for out front, it's a neat property, and hopefully, we can get the other body shops in town to come in line with that.
Unfortunately, I don't think they have that kind of facility where they can put stuff away. I think their backyard, their front yard, there's no backyard. That, I don't know, that's been there for twenty, well, longer I've been here, because rugby ball and volley twenty-five years ago.
Did the ninth happen?
Yeah, it was [inaudible].
Right.
My conclusion, and it's been like that for years. Is there a backyard? Eh, it's in back of the apartment area. It's nothing. Which is really nothing, and as is indicated by the pictures, as I said before, certain properties started annexing into other properties.
Right.
It looks like you have some utilizing that for some storage and some...
That actually has a house attached to it.
Yes.
There's a house that's part of a property, and it looks like years ago when it was built, they just built it. And the house, actually, person who built it owned that property, just did it, and not thinking what we're doing today, this is going to be a problem. It's a problem.
Well, I think you're right. We have to try to send up the Mayor and Council for some type of ordinances to be put in place.
Of course, and another problem, not only with this property, I've dealt with another property, is that the actual owners of the business or the properties, being the nature of their business, bringing their own private vehicles there, and they start storing them vehicles that are not operative, that are, again, for whatever duration, waiting restoration that goes on for years, and I don't think that's the intention of the borough to permit a business, you know, utilizing storage for the personal...
Well, especially when it's not indoor storage, or at least in a place where it's not going to be a public catcher.
Right, where it's in...
I think you're speaking of a public catcher or something.
We actually force, federal thirty-nine law, it prevents them from parking these parts on the street. Believe it or not, some of these shops, Mr. Knight would tell you, they have a habit of putting one street for storage, but that, absolutely not. You're not doing it. And why else would you force that law? And we've been keeping a good lid on that.
Good.
Not only there, but in other places where he's talking about.
So, the problem you have, especially with the body repair, you have collision damaged vehicles. Again, they're waiting repairs, but in that particular case, they're right up there on the street, no security, again, creating the attractive uses to children. And they may be there for a legitimate purpose, awaiting farts and waiting to repair, put the vehicle back in service, but the other one...
There's nothing in place right now to take care of that, nor is there anything...
Again, I think, you know, as you know, some of these ordinances need to be brought to today's standard. There's a section for vehicles under gasoline filling stations. So, if it's not a gas station, which some of our order pairs are not, they don't fall under that particular [inaudible].
Look into it. We'll definitely look into it.
I, I forwarded to the Mayor and Council the same report that you...
Yeah, I got it. We'll, we'll discuss it, for sure.
Yeah, so something, again, should cover all of our order mode business.
If you have any suggestions you would like to put forward as a code official, it would probably be helpful on there, and Council, I would think.
Yeah, for sure.
You need me for discussion or...
Yeah, I'm going to look into it, we'll discuss it. If I need anything else, I'll definitely reach out to you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
Thank you.
Do we have any communications? Okay, Mr. Rowan, we sent the letter to Mayor and Council regarding the proposed conceptual review request. Did we get a reply from that, or are we still on first reading to get that done?
Excuse me, say again?
The conceptual review request?
For...
For the informals?
I think it was under, I think...
First reading?
First reading was last, yeah. First reading.
Last night, first reading?
That's correct.
Is that right?
It was on first reading.
All right, so, we had first reading last night, and that's, that's what we're trying to do, as you know, with the informals, trying to get something a little bit more uniform. So, we have some more information to help the people coming in for informals when they come before us, that we have notification of what they're trying to do. So, hopefully, by, maybe our June meeting, we'll have it done.
Yeah, we'll move it along.
Yeah, we're, we're really trying, we're going to really try to not entertain any more informals until we have that test, and that is in an effort to be sure that we're doing right by the applicant and by the professionals and by the entire board, that we all have proper notification, and we can have some diligence in what we're trying to answer the questions. Good and welfare, at this point in time, I'll open the floor to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter, please come forward and be heard.
James [inaudible] one hundred Jupiter Avenue, [inaudible], New Jersey.
Hi, Dean.
How's it going, Joe?
Very good, sir.
I was just wondering if there was any progress on the [inaudible].
Uh, it's court day. Did you receive a subpoena in the mail?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
That's, that's it. You never heard anything, huh?
No.
And I would like to thank Mr. Hall for all his efforts in the task. Thank you very much. Enjoy it.
You're welcome.
Bring back [inaudible].
Oh, you're not kidding. Thank you.
You guys are good at everything. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the [inaudible] to speak? Is there a motion to close the [inaudible] portion of the meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Vanello is seconded by Mr. Renieri. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. And is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
That's seconded.
Motion by Mr. [inaudible] seconded by Mr. Pachowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven forty.